Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes. On Aug-- excuse me, April 28th, the academic committee of the board met in executive session to discuss a personnel matter and review agency business that have discussed in public could lead to the disclosure of confidential or protected information. Also, prior to tonight's public meeting, the board met in executive session to discuss several matters. The board reviewed a confidential student matter that if discussed in public would lead to the disclosure of information protected by law. The board also discussed a personnel matter and reviewed agency business that have discussed in public could lead to the disclosure of confidential or protected information. And the board also discussed with council information or strategy in connection to pending tax litigation matters and issues about which identifiable complaints may be made. Mrs. Anusik, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Cooper.
Here.
Ms. Dad.
Here.
Ms. Finley.
Here.
Mr. Frank.
Here.
Mr. Good.
Here.
Mr. Hamilton.
Here.
Dr. Hasselcorn.
Here.
Mrs. Lynch.
Here.
Ms. Sitch.
Here.
Nine members present.
Thank you. And I see we have such a large group of wonderful guests. I'm excited everyone is able to make it despite the last week we've all had. So, thank you for coming. And Dr. Reljack, could you introduce them all?
Yes, I would be happy to. And we do appreciate everyone being here this evening. First, I would like to introduce Hartwood Elementary School Principal, Dr. Rachel Fishbaugh, who is here to introduce Hartwood employees who have dedicated 25 years of service to the school district. So, Dr. Fishbaugh.
That was very much appreciated. Thank you. I have had the wonderful pleasure of working with these dedicated educators for 13 years. Their commitment to our students and school culture is commendable. I'd first like to introduce to you Jody Travalia. Jody has assisted in developing a curriculum that excites students. They have a passion for fitness with a healthy dose of competitiveness. Jody has always been a team player and will be missed as she transitions as she transitions into retirement. Thank you, Jody. Our next Hartwood team member is Mrs. Karina Grant. Karina has always shown a passion for student engagement and fun. She collaborates with her colleagues and is ready to take a challenge head-on. If you've ever been in her classroom, you leave with the biggest smile because her songs and activities are so engaging that you can't help but be energized. Jody and Karina have contributed to the fabric of Hartwood. Please welcome me and congratulate Jody and Karina for 25 years of service. Mrs. Meredith Brown is unable to be with us this evening, but I'll make sure that she does receive her PIN. Thank you so much and have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you so much.
Next, I would like to introduce Ms. Caitlin Toth, the principal at Kerr Elementary School, who will be introducing Kerr employees who are also celebrating 25 years of service.
Good evening, everyone. It's my honor to congratulate three employees from Kerr Elementary School this evening for their 25 years of teaching in the Fox Chapel area school district. I'm going to start off with Mary Ellen Delansky. Mary Ellen Delansky began her career in the Fox Chapel area school district as a personal care assistant at O'Hara Elementary and then the middle school. She then moved into her role as an instructional assistant at Kerr Elementary School, where she currently works to assist and support students throughout the day. When asked what Mary Ellen was enjoyed most about and what makes her most proud of her last 25 years in the district, she shared that helping students grasp new concepts and ideas and witnessing their joy and pride when they accomplish what they've been working toward happens. Mary Ellen also mentioned that she has had the privilege of meeting many amazing people at Fox Chapel who've contributed to her growth in countless and positive ways. She shares the wisdom she's gained from them deeply as well as their lasting friendships. Personally, I can say anytime you see Mary Ellen in the hallway or working with a student, she greets you with kind words or a welcoming smile. And we are very lucky to have her as part of our Kerr team. Congratulations, Mary Ellen. Next up, we have Jackie Cosatek. Jackie Cosatek started her career teaching kindergarten, then third grade, and then fifth grade. During her time as a classroom teacher, Jackie witnessed firsthand the importance of strong reading skills in a child's development, which then led her to her current position at Kerr Elementary, a reading specialist. Jackie holds her position as a reading specialist with dedication, passion, and a deep sense of purpose. Jackie always is also is the elementary reading department chairperson, a position which allows her to collaborate with administrators and teachers to support students with literacy instruction in the classroom. When asked what has made her the most proud in her 25 years at Fox Chapel, Jackie said that it is the individual student successes, the moments when a child finds their reading voice first, then the continuation when letters turn to words and words then into meaning, and then spending her career helping others grow that makes her the most proud. We are very lucky to have Jackie as part of our Kerr team. I can personally say she has taught me through foundations as an intermediate elementary teacher and her extensive knowledge of literacy and willingness to help others make a positive impact on our staff and students. Congratulations on 25 years, Jackie. And finally, from Kerr, we have Tina Thompson. Tina Thompson attended PIT for her master's and certificate in special education. She started out her career as a box, completing a round of her student teaching at Dorseyville Middle School. She then taught a year as a leave replacement at a neighboring district, was a year-long leave replacement back at Dorseyville Middle School, and then was finally hired at Kerr as her home as a special education teacher. Tina shared with me that she still feels the same enthusiasm and devotion for students as she did when she accepted her teaching contract position 25 years ago. She continues to strive to help students learn in the best way that meets their needs, makes them feel safe and heard, and celebrates their wins. We are very lucky to have Tina at Kerr Elementary. One of the best things about Tina is that she always celebrates the wins of her students and teaches them that the fun moments are just as important as the serious ones. It's apparent with any conversation with Tina that she cares deeply about her students and their success. Congratulations, Tina.
Thank you very much. Our O'Hara Elementary School employee who is recognized for 25 years of service is Dana Ferrari, and she unfortunately is unable to attend this evening, but we do want to congratulate her. Next, I would like to introduce Dorseyville Middle School Program Principal, Dr. Laura Miller, who is going to be introducing Dorseyville Middle School employees who are celebrating 25 years of service.
Good evening. Tonight, I have the privilege of honoring three extraordinary educators who have each dedicated 25 years of service to our district. Their unwavering commitment to our students and school community deserves our deepest appreciation and recognition. I'd like to start with Kristin Pollock. Kristin started her career as a school counselor at Kerr and later moved to Dorseyville Middle School, providing counseling, support, and a listening ear to countless students navigating the challenges of their educational journey in elementary and middle school. Her compassionate approach and dedication to student well-being have made her an invaluable resource for both students and families alike. Kristin leads the DMS Counseling Department as the chair and works tirelessly on student scheduling and other requests from her teachers, staff, or me. Kristin's "everything's going to be okay" attitude is appreciated. When not at work, Kristin can be found running her family business with her husband Jeff and spending time with Logan and Lexi. Thank you for all you do for DMS, our students, and our staff, Kristin. We're lucky to have you. Congratulations on 25 years. I'd next like to recognize Kristy Rupert. Kristy has spent 25 years inspiring students as a mathematics teacher. Through her engaging teaching style and patience, she has transformed what many find intimidating into accessible and even enjoyable subject. Her commitment to helping students build confidence in their mathematical abilities has shaped all the students she's taught. Kristy helped to implement the Algebra Core course to allow more access to algebra in eighth grade and has taught this course since its inception. Additionally, Kristy taught a math seminar course at the University of Pittsburgh for math interns for six years. The connection to the university brought numerous math interns to DMS. Most notably is Kristy's personality and storytelling ability surely able to captivate any audience. Over the past year, we've shared stories of our preteen daughters and all their glorious Sephora stories. Congratulations on 25 years, Kristy. Thank you for all you've done and continue to do for the students of DMS. And last but not least, Lynn Erdos. Lynn, also celebrating 25 years as a mathematics teacher, has consistently demonstrated excellence in the classroom. Her dedication to her teaching and genuine passion for mathematics have motivated her students to pursue their fullest potential. Her dedication extends beyond the classroom through her involvement with the Student Assistance Program, a facilities coordinator, and the Honorable Coordinator. Lynn has most recently been teaching eighth-grade math, but previously taught sixth-grade math and was a Quest teacher. Lynn always offers to help our school in big and small ways, serving on committees and also hosting PIT interns. Outside of the classroom, Lynn can be found on a lacrosse field or a golf course, spending time with her three sons and her husband. Congratulations on 25 years, Lynn. Thank you for all of your hard work and dedication. In addition, I'd like to recognize the staff members with 25 years of service from Dorseyville Middle School who are unable to be here this evening. Their PINs will be presented at our next faculty meeting. I'd like to congratulate Tim Durbisch, Ginger Wilson, Melissa Swift, and Ally Moletta.
Thank you, Dr. Miller, and thank you to our educators. Next, I would like to introduce Fox Chapel Area High School Program Principal, Dr. Michelle Young, who is here to introduce the employees from the high school who are being honored for 25 years of service.
Good evening. I am pleased to be here and honored to be able to announce two of our teachers from Fox Chapel Area High School who are in attendance this evening and one who was unable to be here, and recognize them for their 25 years of service and dedication to our students. First, I would like to call Amy Montgomery. Amy is here this evening out with her mother, who I do believe is a retired Fox Chapel area teacher as well. So, she's here carrying on the legacy of excellence at Fox Chapel as she follows in her mother's footsteps. Her mother, a retired Fox Chapel teacher, is here with her this evening. Amy teaches French at all levels in a very exquisite manner, and I have had the privilege of overseeing the World Language Department and getting to know Amy much better this year. We have been working together through interviews and the process, and it has been such a pleasure to work alongside Amy and to watch her as she interacts with her student teacher, who has been here student teaching in her classroom, as she inspires him in his future career endeavors, as well as watching her through the interview process and how much dedication she has to our students and ensuring that we hire the right candidate for the position at Fox Chapel Area High School. Amy is kind, warm, and an amazing educator who we are very lucky to have. Thank you for your service. Next, I would like to call Deb Welty. Being newer to the district, I hear that Deb has been around for a little while, having graduated from Fox Chapel Area High School as well. Both of these ladies, I would like to say, are very-- they're quiet leaders. So, they are leaders of their own right, but they aren't flashy. They don't make a big show, but they do their job and they do it very, very well. Deb has been dedicated to students of all levels. She was a regional athletic superstar herself and an inductee in the Fox Chapel Hall of Fame. She coaches our Unified sports teams, teaches Unified physical education, is a pioneer in online health curriculum, teaches lifeguarding, and she has also been a beacon in the community her entire life. Also, a superkind, sweethearted woman who would do anything to help our students. You can see her out with a whistle at the Unified Track meets and also jumping into the pool with our students as well. Both of these ladies are amazing educators, and we're very fortunate to have them with us in the Fox Chapel Area High School. Congratulations. We do have one more educator with 25 years of experience, but Kim Holleran was not able to be with us this evening, so we will present her PIN to her at a later time. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations and thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. How are you?
I do want to take note to our educators how proud we are of your service every single day and that you have dedicated 25 years to our school district, more importantly, to our children, and that makes a major difference. So, to all of our staff members, we thank you and thank you for all that you do for us. Next, we were hoping that Mariana Ramirez would be able to be here. She is our Luminary Award winner, but unfortunately, she was not able to come this evening. So, I'm going to move on to Dorseyville Middle School Gifted Education, Mimi Luffler, who is here to introduce students who won awards in math competitions.
Good evening. It's my pleasure tonight to introduce four remarkable math students. These gentlemen are always very eager to participate in all the different math competitions that we offer, and they always do very well. And the first competition I'll discuss is the Allegheny Intermediate Unit Calc- Solve Competition, and they all scored perfect, and they tied for first place. So, that would be Rishi Krishnamurthy, Lyndon Track, Shang Fang Phi, and Brian Zhu. Now, I think Shang Fang and Brian are here, but I'm not sure about the others. But I'll give you guys your certificates in a moment because there's more. You guys keep winning. The other competition was MathCon. So, MathCon, like all the other math competitions, is about problem-solving, very challenging math problems, and the students are competing nationally there. And we had both Shang Fang and Brian each scoring in the 99th percentile, which is pretty remarkable. And they both have secured a spot at the MathCon finals this summer. We also have the last competition. This is where Brian really made himself shine, is in what's called the PA Math League contest. Now, PA Math League is a very challenging math competition. It's a timed competition. It has 35 problems. A score of 15 is considered very, like a good score. You should be proud of yourself. Brian really knocked it out of the park and got a perfect. And I've been here a long time, a really long time, and I've been in this position a long time, and I've had very few students, maybe one, if I'm right, who's scored a perfect in this before. So, it's really remarkable. So, I would like to call down Brian. He's here. There's Brian. Shang Fang, I think I saw you, Shang Fang. Are you here? Come on, Shang Fang. Come on down. And I don't know if Rishi or Lyndon are here.
Oh, we do have somebody.
Oh, we do. Oh, Lyndon, come on down. All right, thank you very much.
Good job.
Well, we have even more students who we'd like to recognize this evening. So I'd like to ask Dr. Michelle Young to once again come up to the podium to introduce some students from the high school.
I always have to adjust for my tall stature. I am not sure, I was trying to scan the audience to see which of these students are here in attendance, but I'm going to go ahead and announce them all anyway. And if you are here, if you would like to come forward, I would very much appreciate that. First, we have Gabriella Hampel, and I believe these notes are in the board packet, but I will just highlight a few points about these different awards. Gabriella was named a member of the 37th Class of the Coca-Cola Scholars Program. She was one of only 150 students from across the nation to be selected for this, as this scholar. Prior to being named a scholar, she was a regional finalist and a semifinalist for the award. They were chosen from more than 105,000 applicants, and this award is based on academic excellence, leadership, and service demonstrated in school and community activities. Each scholar, including Gabriella, receives a $20,000 college scholarship. Wow is correct. Absolutely. I am looking at colleges as well for my daughter, so I can say wow to that. Absolutely. Gabriella was invited to an all-expenses-paid weekend in early April in Atlanta where she was honored at the Coca-Cola Scholars Banquet. Gabriella, are you here in the audience today? If you are, come on down. What an awesome accomplishment. Gretchen Schlestak won a third-place bronze medal at this Skills USA Pennsylvania Competition. Gretchen competed in the cosmetology category and is also enrolled in our Beatty's Cosmetology Program. She qualified for the state contest after first placing, in first place at the Skills USA Pennsylvania District Eight Competition that was held back in February, and the state contest was held at the beginning of April in Hershey. Gretchen, are you able to be with us this evening? Next, we have Senior Luca Poli and Junior Leila Gola, named the 24-25 High School All-American Strength and Conditioning Athletes of the Year by the National Strength and Conditioning Association. This recognition honors high school athletes whose accomplishments reflect their dedication to strength and conditioning. They were nominated and won this award for academic accomplishments, but also for integrity as student athletes and for being role models to their peers. And I can say firsthand that both of these individuals are wonderful, wonderful role models for all of our students at Fox Chapel Area High School. Luca was recognized for football, but also participates on the Unified Bocce Team and the Track Team. Leila was recognized as a multi-sport athlete and participates on the girls' tennis and crew teams. Both of these individuals were nominated by Brandon Pfeifer, who is one of our high school's social studies teachers, and also an interscholastic strength and conditioning head coach at Fox Chapel Area High School. And here is what Coach Pfeifer had to say. Luca, you can head on down. Luca embodies all the qualities that we look for in our student athletes. Over the years, he has won numerous awards for football, and his dedication to physical preparation throughout his high school career has been exceptional. Leila, are you here? I don't see Leila, but I'll read what Mr. Pfeifer had to say about Leila anyway. In addition to being a scholar athlete, Leila has a strong passion for community service and also has a commitment to public health, and she serves as a Youth Advisory Council Member for the Pennsylvania Department of Health and also contributes to youth-centered health policies at Penn State University. So I will make sure that Leila gets her award at a later date. Thank you and congratulations.
Next, I would like to welcome High School Gifted Education Facilitator Lisa Gibson, who is going to be honoring four high school students.
Good evening. It is my pleasure to recognize, first of all, Karsten Buchard. Is he here today? Hi, Karsten, come on up. Karsten was named a national winner in the Congressional Essay Contest. Karsten is one of approximately 50 winners from across the nation and one of only three from the state of Pennsylvania. As a national winner, Karsten receives a full scholarship to attend a civics-focused seminar in Washington, DC, where he will meet leaders from the federal government and private sectors toward the White House, congressional offices, historical landmarks, and museums. Ori Golden. Is Ori here tonight?
Enjoy that trip.
Thought I saw him. Okay, well, congratulations to Ori. He was recently named the first-place winner of both the state and Allegheny County American Legion Essay Contest. The essay topic was, why is the First Amendment important in America? And as the state's first-place winner, Ori wins $3,500 along with an all-expenses-paid trip to the PA American Legion Convention in July, where he will read his winning essay to the assembled delegates. So congratulations to Ori. Is Ulania here? And Joanna Lee? Ulania Kubini and Joanna Lee? Okay, they must all be studying for their AP exams. Well, Ulania was named the 2025 Carson Scholar, and Joanna Lee had her status as a Carson Scholar renewed and was named a recognized Carson Scholar. There are thousands of students from across the nation that are nominated each year by educators based on their high academic achievement and their commitment to their communities through community service. So congratulations to the girls as well. Thank you.
Next, I would like to ask a high school educator and MAU UN and Speech and Debate sponsor, Mark Metuziak, who is going to come to the podium to honor several students who won awards at competitions this school year. And I feel like I've been following along from your emails all throughout the season.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, distinguished guests, family members, students, colleagues. It's great to be here another year. I'm here with Rob Wilson. He's assistant coach for Speech and Debate. He's also a parent in the district, so he gets to see both sides of our world. But we've had a very successful season this year. So if anyone's here from Speech and Debate, I know Elaine is here. Please stand up. Let's see, Ori. A lot of the names, if you read, you'll see these are names of students that show up in a lot of places, very talented. Come on down, Elaine. So we've had a very successful season. Elaine is one of the students who, this year, she advanced to the state championship tournament, having picked up a new event in debate with a partner. How much before the tournament? Like, three days? About that. She did a great job, Mr. Wilson being our debate coach, and I think she had a great time and had a very good run. But if you look at the names and look at all the awards, we have a very busy season, and the nice thing, I'll say it from my selfish point of view, with Elaine here, she's one of them, is of those students listed, most of them are underclassmen. So I look forward to another year, next year, and after that, of more success and another time to come see you and tell you about them. I will mention one senior in particular who couldn't be here tonight, Ben Fiedler. He's graduating, but he's had a successful career for four years in MAU United Nations with us, and I wish he were here to have a good send-off because he has earned every amount of applause and every accolade that we can give him. So thank you again for all your support. It's, we're not possible without your help.
Next, I would like to turn this over to our music department and high school music teachers, Darrell Lesnik and Ben Murray, along with Dorseyville Middle School Band Director Evan Hertrick, who are here to honor several students for their musical achievements.
Good evening. It's great to be here with all of you. If we could have all of the Dorseyville and Fox Chapel Area High School music students, band, choir, and orchestra just line up against the wall so we can get a wave from you as we, as we recognize you this evening. This is always one of my favorite, favorite events of the year, kind of wraps up the school year, and it's hard to believe that we're here already. We have many musical accomplishments at the high school. One of my favorite is biannually, we have the Kaleidoscope Concert, and that was, the mastermind behind that was Mari Cooper, our orchestra director, who can't be here this evening, and Ben Murray, who you'll hear from in a second, our choir director. It's an hour of music that features all of our music ensembles at the high school, and we have the Assyria Shriner, so we're excited to have that in March. Tonight, we'll be recognizing students who've worked very hard with their private teachers and practicing at home to prepare solos for auditions. For each of those auditions, there's a blind audition panel that's normally three or four band directors, and the student comes in and they play excerpts that they've prepared, and they receive scores on a rubric in rhythm, pitch and intonation, interpretation, technique and tone, and the students with the highest scores in those areas, they fill ensembles and they're able to play with some of the top college conductors and composers from around the country. So we'll kick off with the honors groups. PMEA, the Pennsylvania Music Educators Association, District One is made up of about 50 schools in western Pennsylvania. And PMEA Honors Band was at North Hills High School, and this year, we had Elliot Broyles on trombone, Nadre Digbo on clarinet, Marina Dunham on bassoon, Jack Murray Crzan on percussion, and Joshua Shaw on flute. For honors, we'll just twirl our applause till the end because we have a laundry list of people here this evening. For Mari Cooper, the PMEA Honors Orchestra, which was upper St. Clair, we had Zing Carlo on viola, Michael Costello on bass, Anna Delali O'Connor on violin, Chase Hall on cello, Eloise Johnson on violin, Henry Sun on violin, Hayden Track on violin, and Leo Vandepel on cello. The Honors Jazz, they put together two Honors Jazz Ensembles that are made up of about 21 students in each ensemble, representing Fox Chapel. We had Lindsay Gold on alto saxophone and Patton Johnson on drum set. Allegheny Valley Honors Band is made up of our neighboring schools. There's nine school districts in the Allegheny Valley Honors Band. This year, it was hosted at Pine Richland. We had Annabelle Berkowitz on bassoon, Elliot Broyles on trombone, Nadre Digbo on clarinet, Marina Dunham on bassoon, Polly Goyle on trombone, Lindsay Gold alto sax, Stephen Hu on tenor sax, Claire Lesnik on trumpet, Jack Murray Crzan percussion, Evelyn Owens on clarinet, and Mary Claire Owens on clarinet, Joshua Shaw on flute, and Patty Westerachikit on clarinet. If we could have a round of applause for that first half. The Pennsylvania Music Educators Association each year has district, region, and all-state festivals. So the district festival, it's western Pennsylvania, so there's five counties that make up districts, and those students audition to get into district, band, choir, and orchestra, and then the top students from there advance to regions, which is made up of nine counties. And then as they advance on, from region band to all-state band, they audition again, and then the top students from the over 500 school districts in the state of Pennsylvania come together, and this year, they had the All-State Conference in Kalahari and the Poconos. So in district band, at Laurel Highlands High School, we had Elliot Broyles on trombone, Malik Choset on trumpet, Nadre Digbo on clarinet, Marina Dunham on bassoon. Marina, where are you? Can you give us a big wave? So if you see on Marina's jacket, Marina's been to millions of festivals, as we can see by her medals, but each festival, they get a medal, and then the students wear those for the festivals so everybody can see where they've gone. And the cool thing with band is they all wear their marching band uniforms, so on the stage, they can see all the students and where they're from. Lindsay Gold on alto saxophone, Jack Murray Crzan on percussion, and Joshua Shaw on flute. District orchestra, the orchestra brings together not only strings, violin, viola, cello, and bass, but the winds, woodwinds and brass and percussion are also eligible for orchestras. We have some students who have done both. Elliot Broyles again on trombone, Michael Costello bass, Anna Delali O'Connor on violin, Marina Dunham again on bassoon, Chase Hall cello, Jack Murray Crzan percussion, Aisling Sen on harp, another sweet instrument that we have here at Fox Chapel, Joshua Shaw on flute, and Leo Vandepel on cello. Region band. Those districts. Okay, so region band, we had Elliot Broyles, Marina Dunham, Jack Murray Crzan, and Joshua Shaw. And then for region orchestra, we had Elliot Broyles, Michael Costello, Anna Delali O'Connor, Marina Dunham, Chase Hall, Jack Murray Crzan, Aisling Sen, and Joshua Shaw. So if we can hear it for all those students that made it through districts and regions, There are many school districts in the state of Pennsylvania. I don't know that anybody realizes this, but we'll only send one student to all-state band, choir, or orchestra in maybe 30 years, and we're very fortunate with our support and with students practicing and parents driving students to lessons and encouraging them to practice at home, that we always have a fleet of students that we send out to all states. That's also an accreditation to our general music program and our elementary instrumental programs and all the great things happening here and the music program at the middle school. So this year, we had six students who went all the way to states in band and orchestra, and actually, they're all in the orchestra. Mr. Murray announced the choir, but we have, if we can, we can clap for each of these students because this is a huge accomplishment. Elliot Broyles on trombone. Michael Costello on bass. Marina Dunham on bassoon. Marina, actually, this is her third year going to state, so that's a huge accomplishment. So congratulations on your senior going for three years in a row. Chase Hall on cello. Jack Murray Crzan on percussion. And Joshua Shaw on flute. As we, as we wind the year, on Friday evening, we have the Spring High School Band Concert at the high school at 7:00 PM. It's free if anybody wants to come out and check out some amazing music. We'll also be parading through the streets on Memorial Day at Sharp Store, Blonox, and Aspen Mall, kind of our marathon between 9:00 and 1:00 PM, and we always look forward to performing at graduation. The other quick thing that I wanted to thank everybody, thank the board for and our administrators and the community, we have two amazing, brand-new elementary band directors this year, Joshua Bronker, who is at Kerr in Fairview, and Carly Umholz at Hartwood and O'Hara. So it's just amazing to have them here. Evan Hertrick was at Hartwood and O'Hara, and Evan moved up to the middle school, he'll be here in a second, is the high school band director. I feel like the old, the old person now. I'm the oldest person in the band strand. I don't know, it's because everybody's so young, or I look over and I see my daughter, I'll embarrass her. My daughter Claire's in ninth grade and she's in the band program, and it's amazing to be here, but it's been an amazing 21 years working in the school district, and I just want to thank each and every one of you. And I will turn the microphone over to the other marching band director and our new Dorseyville Middle School Band Director, Evan Hertrick.
All right, as Mr. Lesnik said, this is my first year at Dorseyville, so I'm excited to be able to introduce these students after spending 10 years teaching at Hartwood and O'Hara. So I'm excited. These students are very hardworking. Any student in seventh or eighth grade was eligible to audition for the Allegheny Valley Honors Band. They auditioned on December 3rd this year, and these Dorseyville Middle School students put in a lot of extra hours. They stayed after school with me a couple times to play their piece for me, as well as practicing on their own and with their private teachers. They were selected to participate in the Honors Band Festival on January 17th at Pine Richland High School, and the AV Honors Band consists of nine Northern Area School Districts with many talented music students. And the students had the honor of learning and performing under the direction of Dr. Gregory Drain. Gregory Drain, Drain, who is the director of the Penn State Blue Band. They put on a wonderful performance. The students who participated are Isaac Chan on the trumpet, Rebecca Dornich on the flute, Shangfang Fei on the clarinet, Lucy Hanlin on the clarinet, Celestio Hao on the flute, Delaney Liu on the flute, Zoe Liu on the flute, Holden Link on the trombone, and Christine Meskell on the tuba. Let's give a round of applause for these. I also want to say, these students are also in many ensembles here at Dorseyville, the Jazz Band and the Honors Band. And on May 16th, the Honors Band will be traveling to Duquesne University to be adjudicated and then spending the day at Kennewood, along with our other ensembles here at Dorseyville, run by Mr. Breyer and Mrs. Brasic, so we're excited to do that. And, and then on May 21st, we'll have a big concert here with all of the seventh and eighth grade band students, plus the Jazz Band and the Honors Band. So, thank you, everyone, for your support. And I'm going to pass the mic to Mr. Breyer, our orchestra director here, who's been a huge help to me and a wonderful person to work with and supports all of the music students in Dorseyville.
Hello, good evening. I would like to recognize eighth-grade violist Emma Nansiri for representing Fox Chapel at the PMEA District One Junior High Orchestra Festival, held at Gateway School District, April 25th and 26th. She earned a second chair placement based on audition once selected to participate. Thank you, Emma, and I want to give you a round of applause. So, thank you, Emma. Congratulations. Let me introduce Ben Murray to introduce additional high school students. Ben.
Wanted, again, thank you for having us here this evening. I think what sets these students apart is the fact that they really do make music to be able to change lives of people, and they've done that throughout the community this year, not only with these PMEA festivals, but going around and performing at various nursing homes and for community events. So, want to thank them for that. But these are students that have gone above and beyond doing our PMEA festivals and some other festivals. We have 10 students, high school choir students, that participated in the Second Annual Allegheny County Chorus Festivals. And we had seniors Madeline Jones and Elena Kennewick, juniors Alana Kalig, Lincoln Rowley, Benjamin Shuttleworth and Robert Svensson, and sophomores Casey Benachowski, Maisie Hayes, Sophia Malani and Emily Wright. So, congratulations to those two. We had four students participate in the PMEA District Chorus Festival that was held at Mount Lebanon High School in January. Elena Kennewick, Evangeline Serino, Robert Svensson and Maya Wilson. Congratulations to those four. Three students attended PMEA Region One Chorus, which was held in February. That's Elena Kennewick, Evangeline Serino and Maya Wilson. Congratulations to them. And as Mr. Lesnik said, it's always a testament to our elementary and middle school programs as well for our students that then move on to, to all-state. We're fortunate that we had two students move on to the all-state choir this year, Elena Kennewick and Maya Wilson. Congratulations to those two. Thank you again for having us this evening, and I'm going to introduce my colleague, who I am very happy to work with, and that's Mrs. Brasic at the middle school.
Good evening. It is so fun to see our students. They are so talented. Many of them were in multiple ensembles here at the middle school, and I know for a fact that at least four of them are black belt holders in Taekwondo. So, whether it's on the stage, or in the classroom, or in their communities, or in the Dojang, we have multi-talented kids, and it's so, so fun to see them continuing their good work. So, I'm pleased to recognize tonight Avery Graham and Giselle Silva. They were selected to perform with the PMEA District One Junior High Honor Choir. Usually, we're only guaranteed to get one student in this ensemble. I'm so glad that they took both of them. I would never have been able to choose between them. They're fabulous kids. They've served our ensembles really, really well as leaders on the Honor Choir Council. And so, I was glad that they had this opportunity. At Keystone Oaks High School, it was on February 28th. Our guest conductor was Victor C. Johnson, and we have actually, our choirs have performed several of his arrangements and compositions, so we were all kind of fangirling that day. Maybe it's just me, but we still had a lot of fun. Still a lot of fun with them. So, both of these girls have been active in the program for the last three years. They have been on the stage in musical productions and, as I said, have participated not only in our choirs all three years, but also served as officers in our Honor Choir. So, I'm very, very proud of them and pleased to recognize them tonight. Congratulations.
Well, congratulations to our musicians and congratulations on all of your accomplishments, whether they're from middle school or high school. And we know that we are also very thankful to the educators for all the work that you do, not only the ones standing here, but all of the others in the department. So, thank you. And we certainly invite all of you to stay for the full meeting. However, if you have other things that you need to do, like study for your AP assessments or anything else, we certainly do understand as well.
All right. It's now time for our Fox Leadership Council Student Representative, Helen Blyer. Oh, here he comes.
Hello again, everybody. My name is Helen Blyer, and I'm the Vice President at our Fox Leadership Council at Fox Chapel. And while this brings, this month brings AP exams, keystones and final exams, it ends with all things about my class, the Class of 2025. Some upcoming events, we are rescheduling our annual Senior Breakfast, sponsored by the High School PTO, and Senior Parents for later in the month due to the weather. We are planning a Senior Sunrise for the first time to meet at the stadium to watch the sun come up together. And finally, we have our next new tradition, the Senior Elementary Walk. We'll be heading to elementary schools after the senior picnic on June 4th to say hello to our elementary teachers and staff, to show off our next steps to all the current students. A group of senior leaders has been planning this with our district elementary team. We hope this is the first of many senior walks. Thank you for all you have done for the Class of 2025 over the years. I hope you all can join us for the commencement on June 8th, and maybe I'll see you there. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much. Dr. Reljack, do you have the superintendent's report?
I do. We have actually a few people here for our Lens on Learning this evening, and so I'm going to introduce Fox Chapel High School Program Principal, Dr. Michelle Young, and our librarian, Dr. Laura Ward. They are here this evening to talk about the high school library and the recent honors that it has received. And additionally, students from Dr. Ward's QRT, who are described as the "library enthusiasts", are also here to talk about the various programs that the library offers. So, Dr. Young.
Thank you, Dr. Reljack. I was actually sitting here reflecting, and I, and I won't go off on too long of a tangent, but I have had the pleasure of working with three librarians in my tenure as a school administrator. And I can say, and I can say this honestly, without hesitation, that Dr. Ward has the most enthusiasm and most pride in her school library, in our school library, than any librarian I've worked with. And I've worked with wonderful librarians, so please don't mis-hear that. But without trying to steal their thunder, I just wanted to, to take a moment. The Fox Chapel Area High School Library, under the direction of Dr. Laura Ward, was named the 2025 Outstanding Pennsylvania School Library. Our library received this award for being a place where students can inquire, include, collaborate, curate, explore and engage, which are the six foundations of the American Association of School Librarians. To that end, Dr. Ward has created such a wonderful and welcoming environment through her focus on developing connections over collections. Without further ado, I turn things over to Dr. Laura Ward and her students.
Thank you. So, as we said, we are the 2025 Outstanding Pennsylvania School Library, and I just want to say thank you for that, for the support. I'm just showing off my little flex when we got the award back at the beginning of April, which I forgot to mention, Happy Belated School Library Month, which was all April. So, I'm sure you were all celebrating in your own little way. But I just wanted to say that. And my favorite part of my day is when I get to spend time with the students and talk and engage with the students. And I thought, what better way to share about how fantastic the library is than have you get a little taste of what I get on the daily? So, I have, unfortunately, Mema had to scoot out to study for her AP test, but I have five of my wonderful students here.
Thank you for having us today. I'm one of the students in the Library QRT, which is led by Dr. Ward. And one of my main roles in the library is I've been the head of the Shelf Care Club for the last four years, so all my years of high school, I'm a senior this year. And I'm just going to say a little bit about the Shelf Care Club and why it's so important to me and how it impacts my day every day in the library. So, the Shelf Care Club was created by Dr. Ward and Ms. Rachel Mackin, who's our, one of our school counselors. And it was created during my freshman year of high school. Together, the two created a safe space for students to discuss how literature can reflect a shared human experience, and that no matter how different we are, we all experience emotions ranging from sadness to anxiety to happiness and joy. And throughout my years in Shelf Care, I have found comfort and support by reading and relating to books focused on mental health, as well as being able to share my personal experience with fellow club members. In Shelf Care Club, students are able to discuss unique experiences they have gone through and that may relate to others and also to characters in the books we read. Shelf Care has been a huge support for me over the last years in high school, and I hope many other students in the future are able to experience the warmth and growth that Shelf Care Club has offered me, as well as Dr. Ward and Ms. Rachel Mackin. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Francesca Isella, and I'm going to talk about the book club. So, the Fox Chapel Book Club has been a strong club in our high school for the past 15 years with Dr. Ward as the faculty sponsor. We meet monthly to, of course, read, but also to share ideas, ask questions and explore different perspectives together. Even while you're discussing the most straightforward books, you might hear a different point of view from someone, and you could see it in a completely new way. We collaborate with the Cooper Siegel Community Library through our book club. We get our books from them, and they help us foster a community of high school students who share a love for reading. We also contribute to the annual telethon through various different fundraisers, such as our popular cozy reading basket. And the book club is a part of so many events at the high school, but is also a place that our members come and they feel supported, welcomed and heard. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Sophie Resitarski, and I am a member of the Library QRT, member of Shelf Care Club and co-president of Book Club. Can you hear me all right? Okay, sorry, I'm small. So, when I was a freshman at Fox Chapel, I was struggling a lot with my mental health, and I had lots of different therapists. And they would go and they would tell me, you know, to imagine a safe, you know, made-up space in my mind, you know, like a beach or a forest or something. And, you know, I, I didn't like the idea because whenever, you know, I opened my eyes and, you know, I got back to reality, I realized it was never really there. So, to counteract this problem, I decided to go find a place that was real, that I could make my safe place. So, I decided, you know, I could, I found that place at the Fox Chapel Area School District Library. For me, the library was always a place I could go if I needed a break from the bad thoughts in my head. I could curl up with a good book in a quiet place and escape from reality for a little while, just, you know, let loose on the reading. And as I got the help I needed and worked, and worked on opening up, the library became a place where I could talk about my feelings and experiences, either to Dr. Ward or Mrs. Ryan, or through clubs like the Shelf Care Club and the Book Club. The Fox Chapel Library, in my opinion, remains like my own, not only my safe place, but also, in my opinion, an example for what a library should be, a place without judgment, where you can be yourself and learn from others and their experiences through the forms of books, programs, activities, stuff like that. Our school library is a place that's helped me through my high school life, and I know it'll help countless others like me in the future. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Aubrey O'Chidam, and I'm a member of the Library QRT Shelf Care and Book Club. I would just like to start off by saying thank you for having me. And starting at the high school can be extremely overwhelming, and having a safe, welcoming space to go to is so important. For me, that place has been the library. Dr. Ward has created more than just a quiet study area. She's built a supportive environment where students feel seen and encouraged, whether it's reviewing an essay, helping find resources for a project, or simply offering a kind word. Dr. Ward consistently goes above and beyond. It's no surprise that the library is always full of students. It's a true hub for support, learning and community. I'd also like to bring up Back on Track, which is known as BOT, and QRT, when students are able to come into the library and feel super-supported while they're continuing their academic journey and offered like just so much help. I know I've been to Back on Track a few times to finish some tests, and I'm always met with a kind and friendly smile. And thank you.
Hi, my name's Elena Ushy. I'm the co-president of Book Club, and I was also a worker in the library this past fall. Working in the library has been one of my favorite high school experiences. The library is always a warm, welcoming space, and being part of this community has made my time here so enjoyable. As a library worker, I've learned useful skills like labeling and covering books, organizing and cleaning shelves, and creating themed displays each month. I'd like to think that my experience working in the library has helped me grow a sense of responsibility, teamwork and time, time management. I'm so grateful for the chance to be a part of the library team this year. It's an experience that I'll cherish forever. Another wonderful opportunity the library provides is author visits. These visits allow reading enthusiasts to speak one-on-one with locally and nationally-recognized authors. One of the authors who visited the library was Angeline Bulley, who detailed her experience sharing her indigenous heritage as an award, in her award-winning book, Firekeeper's Daughter. These visits allow our students to learn more about being an author and encourages them to pursue writing as a career. Thank you.
I hope you enjoyed listening to our fantastic students. This last slide is just, it's one of the letters, it was part of a letter from our award application, from Cameron Eisner, who graduated last year, and just her sharing how much the library meant to her and how she, as Sophie said, found that safe space and found that welcoming environment. So, I just wanted to share that with you, and thank you all for letting us share how great our school library is. Thank you to our students and to Dr. Ward, and thank you for all of your work. We are proud of our high school library and proud of all of you, so thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Also, as part of the superintendent's report this evening, I just want to call attention to some information that's in the back of the board's agenda under Superintendent Report. There are some textbooks and resource materials that are for review, and this was a topic of discussion at the most recent academic committee meeting. And so, on that agenda that you have is Fox Chapel Area High School Social Studies. It's a, an updated copyright for a social studies book for US history. There is also a Dorseyville Middle School Math publication for Connected Math Project Four that will be used in the pre-algebra six and pre-algebra seven classes. There are different ones for each class. And then also, we had a presentation on science resource materials from OpenSciEd, and it really was about our STEM ACES Professional Learning Grant that has prepared our educators to pilot these materials, and we are, will be seeking adoption of these texts, as well as these open resource materials in the June meeting.
Thank you.
And so, now that we've heard from students and staff, and we've heard about all of these wonderful things in academics and arts and athletics and citizenship, now I'd like to introduce Ms. Kim Polashak, who is here to talk about our 2025-2026 Proposed Final General Fund Operating Budget. So, Ms. Polashak.
Thank you. Good afternoon, no, good evening, actually. So, the presentation I'm going to provide tonight is a summary of the proposed final budget that's on the board's agenda to be approved tonight. The more detailed version was presented publicly in April at the Committee of the Whole Meeting. So, the figures tonight are really just going to highlight any changes that have occurred since that meeting until what is presented on the board's agenda tonight. So, at the Committee of the Whole Presentation in April, the budget reflected revenues of $118,769,942, with expenditures of $121,495,207. And again, those expenditure numbers are omitting the budgetary reserves, so these are just the true budgeted expenditures at this point. The proposed final budget, which reflects figures as of Friday, May 2nd, now show revenues have now show revenues having increased by 1.9 million. And this is due to both the recommended tax increase for current real estate tax collections, as well as an increased property tax relief allocation from the state. And then expenditures also increased slightly by about $192,000, and that is due to personnel adjustments that have occurred since the last meeting. So the main variance since the Committee of the Whole presentation is related to current real estate taxes. The district received its May 2025 certified values, which were at a decrease from the previous year, as the district did expect. The taxable assessment's reduced by 0.37%, which equals a revenue loss of more than $250,000. The proposed final budget on the agenda for approval tonight includes the administration's recommended tax increase of 2.3%. That increase is upon advisement of the Resource Planning Advisory Group and will add approximately $1.7 million into base revenues for the current real estate taxes. What this slide shows is how that recommended tax increase compares historically with Act 1 index, with the U.S. rate of inflation, as well as previous Fox Chapel Area School District approved tax increases. So looking at the chart, the red line represents inflation. The black line is the Act 1 index, and then the blue line is the Fox Chapel Area School District approved tax increases, and then including that 2.3% recommended increase for '25-'26. As you can see, for the most part, the Fox Chapel Area School District's approved tax increases closely follow the same trend as the Act 1 index, except for a few years. And in those years, there were additional factors such as ESAR funding, assessment values, as well as the Act 1 index rate itself for that given year. What this chart also shows is that the recommended increase for '25-'26 is both lower than the Act 1 allowable index of 4% and the projected average annual inflation rate. The other revenue change since the Committee of the Whole Meeting relates to the property tax relief allocation and homestead exemption. Property tax relief allocations were provided this past Friday, May 2, from the state. The property tax relief allocation for our district increased over last year by about $280,000 to $2,552,187 for the '25-'26 school year. Those funds come from state gaming revenues and are used to offset real estate tax liability from local revenue to state revenue through the homestead exemption. So in regards to the homestead exemption itself, for '25-'26, there are 7,843 properties in Fox Chapel Area School District that were approved by the county as a homestead exempt property. 7,836 of them are taxable properties. The others were exempt properties. That is actually an increase of 17 properties over the '24-'25 year. And with, out of those 7,843 properties, it represents 64% of all taxable residential properties and about 3% of all taxable non-residential properties. When we calculate those homestead exempt properties against the certified values and the recommended tax increase, for '25-'26, the homestead exemption included in the proposed final budget numbers tonight offer a reduction of over $14,800 in assessed value reduction for the homeowner, which equals approximately a $326.17 reduction on their tax bill. This is a larger tax reduction than the previous year as well. So this means that while the recommended tax millage increase in the proposed final budget tonight is 2.3%, those properties with a homestead exemption will actually see their tax bills increase by less than 2.3%. And then those homestead exempt properties that actually have an assessment at or below $70,000 will receive a decrease on their tax bill over the '24-'25 year.
Sorry, could you repeat that last statement one more time? Just because it wasn't written down.
That homestead exempt properties that have assessed values at $70,000 or less will have a decrease on their tax bill compared to what they were billed for the '24-'25 school year.
Okay, thank you.
So taking those changes into account, what we're now seeing in the proposed final budget is a total revenue of $120,796,93, with over 78% coming from local sources, 20% from state, and then less than 1% from federal and other sources. And this is on trend with our pre-pandemic funding rates, funding years. Now, in regards to expenditures, the only change since the Committee of the Whole Presentation is that increase of $192,000 relating to adjustments in personnel. That is in both capturing some savings from additional retirements that became known, as well as accounting for some projected increases in special education enrollment. That increase is reflected fully in the wages and benefits section of the budget. So the proposed final budget for approval tonight includes expenditures of $121,687,421. The breakdown for that is personnel comprising 70.8%, mandated costs at 14.5%, non-mandated 6.67%, debt service is 4.76% of the budget, facilities and transfers to capital reserves are both at approximately 1.6% as well. Now, we also add in the $1.5 million that is held for budgetary reserve, and that is added into the total expenditures reported to the PA Department of Education, bringing the total budgeted expenditures to $123,187,421. So in summary, the proposed final budget for approval tonight shows those revenues of $120,796,93 and expenditures of $123,187,421, again, which does include the budgetary reserve, giving a negative net change of $2,477,728, which will be balanced via utilization of Fox Chapel Area School District's available fund balances. We have $1 million planning to come from assigned project, excuse me, the assigned fund balance for capital projects, which will still leave $12 million available for future capital project needs. And then $200,000 being drawn down from the committed fund balance for PISers expenditures, with the remaining to be drawn down from unassigned fund balance, including those funds that were held for budgetary reserve. So what this does is, as of projected June 30 of 2026, leaves an unassigned ending balance, unassigned fund balance ending balance of $8.6 million. That is 7% of the budgeted expenditures, which is well within the 5% to 8% board policy, and it also equates to approximately 26 days of expenditures. So changes can be made between the approval of the proposed final budget and then the adoption of the final budget. There are still some variables outstanding that may affect those final budget figures, including adjustments to the current year's estimated actuals, potential state grants, as well as any state or federal appropriation changes. But what the approval of the proposed final budget on the agenda tonight would do is keep the district on course and within the approved PA Department of Education timelines for budget passages. The next steps would be, after approving the proposed final budget, that the district would post the proposed final budget for public inspection. This has to be done at least 20 days prior to the adoption of the final budget. And by, to do this, the district makes both the proposed final budget available both on the district website, as well as a hard copy that is made available at district administration offices. And then it's actually done typically in the days immediately following the board's approval, which actually puts us well beyond the 20 days minimum requirement. After that, the district will then advertise the board's intent to adopt a final budget at least 10 days prior to the final budget adoption. And then finally, having the final budget presented for adoption in June, as well as the resolution approving the homestead farmstead exemption, which will also be completed then in June. Are there any questions?
Does anyone have questions for Ms. Polashak?
So your statement, your statements about the homestead exemption, that would be with the 2.3% increase?
Correct.
And can you say a little bit more about that? I've actually talked to a few community members who weren't sure what that was and what the scope of the impact is in our community specifically, who's impacted by that.
So the homestead, it's actually called the homestead farmstead exemption. We don't have any approved farmsteads in our district. What that does is you, if you would have to be, have a primary residence. So you have to live in your primary residence to be eligible for the exemption. And you would submit an application to the county, and the county actually approves it every year. Once you've submitted that application and have been approved, you do not have to resubmit. So once you're on the rolls, you're on the rolls. If you sell your, sell your home, or if you purchase a new home, you'll want to make sure that you go through that process. Applications are sent annually. Every year, we actually have the Allegheny Intermediate Unit coordinate and send, mails those eligible properties an application. So if they have, somebody has not received an application and they believe they should have, they can definitely reach out to my office, and we can look into that. But it really does provide a reduction in your assessed value so that you're actually taxed at a lesser assessed value than you might present to the county.
And you can see if you have one on the Allegheny County website.
Yes, if you log into the website, it does, it does state if you're homestead exempt.
And that also tells you your assessed value, right?
Correct.
Of your house, so you can see where you.
That is correct, yes. And it's also listed on the tax bills themselves. When the tax bills go out, they're required to have both your full assessed value, as well as if you have the reduction, what the reduction is.
I think many people, they're impacted, their mortgage pays their tax bill, though. They don't actually see it.
That, that is very true. I don't see mine either. That is very true. So yes, you could log onto the county's website to see. Or again, you could reach out to my office. We have quick access to that as well.
Just to make sure we all understand, so that the, sort of the amount of tax relief and whether this increase is felt as an increase, a decrease, or a net neutral tax change, right, depends greatly on the value of the home. Right? Yeah. So those who have a home that's valued at $70,000 or less may see a decrease in their tax burden. But those with the value of somewhere in between might see something that's closer to neutral or moderate.
Correct. But as long as you have the homestead exemption, you're going to see an increase on your bill of less than the 2.3% approved rate. It'll still be, for those 70,000 assessed value or higher, it'll still be at a slight increase, but it will be less than the 2.3%.
Got it.
So it's. Millage increase is the 2.3%, but the assessed reduction increases as well. So it kind of offsets the calculation.
So it'll still be a tax increase. It'll be a lesser tax increase.
Correct.
Perfect. Okay, great. Yeah, I guess maybe I'll ask, what proportion of our total property number do we think is at that 70,000 value or less? Is that like 30% or 10%?
We ask this every year.
I know I do.
So.
Yeah, just because.
Yes.
And it's only, it's only a sort of a, yeah. I read that in my mind based on how many people we're talking about.
I do believe, and I apologize, well, let me unplug this.
The median is somewhat over, a little over 200,000.
The median, yes. The median is 200, about 230,000. The median of all homestead properties is slightly higher, just because that's a smaller figure that it's calculating off of. But I do believe those at the 70,000 or less assessed value is approximately maybe the 25th percentile of our total taxable residential properties, not necessarily the commercial ones.
But I believe we saw in a previous figure that the median, at the median, we're looking at about a 1.7% increase.
Correct. That's the median of the homestead exempt properties themselves. Of those 7,800 properties, that's the median value of those. The median value of our total tax base is slightly larger.
Right. What's the, I know we talk about the tax increase a lot, but what's the expenditure increase? Because that's really reflective of how we're managing our expenses as a percent.
As a percent, the increase over the previous year. I didn't bring all of my handouts over, too. That is an increase of, it's about 3% over the estimated actuals for '24-'25.
Estimated actuals, which includes reserves, which we adjust down. So it's actually, if you look at our estimated budget last year, because the reserves, for anybody who doesn't want to get into the weeds, it confuses things a little bit.
Correct.
Because at the end of the year, you don't, what you didn't spend out of reserves, you calculate, so it'd probably, it'd actually be less than what we, what we've spent with, we put in the reserves.
That is, that is correct, yes.
So we're under 3% expense growth, and I think we can safely say inflation has been over 3%.
Correct.
Especially in healthcare and a few other categories that affect our budget.
Yes, and, and also still below that Act 1 index, which is the indicator that the school districts are able to use.
And then PISers has been another major concern. And PISers, what, so for those, again, PISers is our, the contribution we have to make on our wage base for covered employees to the Pennsylvania State Employee Retirement System.
Yes, and for '25-'26, that's 34%. So 34 cents for every dollar is a required employer contribution.
About the same as this year or whatever.
So it's a 0.10% increase. So the current year's 33.9, so it's going up to 34%. And then within the next five years, it's expected to be at 37%.
And so we're pulling about 200,000 from reserve. We have a reserve fund to try to cushion that effect.
Correct. The 200,000 that's currently earmarked as a drawdown reflects that increase expected in the PISers employer contributions, offsetting the reimbursement we also receive from the state.
Any other questions? I guess I'm interested, I know that.
Can you speak in your microphone?
I know, it's, it's also, I feel like the microphones are very quiet tonight. How about, yes, how about now? Okay, I got a nod, but I have to look this way to get the nod. Okay, so I guess I'll phrase this sort of as a framework question, which is, you know, we knew going into this year that we were going to have reduced revenue, right? That was one of the, and I do appreciate that you sort of tallied our, our revenue growth year over year typically does track with inflation, right? In some ways, because ostensibly, property should appreciate in value over time, right? And I know that's not been the case lately. There's a special thing happening with property assessments.
Property should, but once you're actually locked in at an assessment value, it doesn't change unless you go through the process to change it.
Exactly.
So.
And nobody raises their hand for that. So, but I think we did know going into this year that we were going to have a reduction in revenue.
We did anticipate that, correct?
Yes. And so, and I know that we also knew going into this year the approximate cost of our teacher contract, all of our other collective bargaining agreements, right? Like, these are the things that march our budget up over time, which should not be inflationary in nature, yes? Because those are contractual obligations that we establish regardless of market conditions.
They're inflationary because they go up.
Yes, they're known ahead of time. What?
They're known, but they are inflationary still.
And so far as we projected, and we tried to be reasonable, given what we knew inflation might be or should be. We tried to afford everyone appreciable increases in wage over time.
We project based on those anticipated increases that are, to the best of our knowledge at that time, known. And that's especially on the wages side. Benefits is a little bit, we have to project an estimated increase that would, yes, take those inflationary increases into account.
Perfect. And so I guess the large, the areas of largest uncertainty as far as us entering into this year were mostly with regards to our healthcare costs, our healthcare obligations, and our PISers obligations. Would you say those are the, sort of the largest wedges of areas that we're movable? Yeah, with personnel, which is our biggest chunk, right?
Personnel, personnel in total is the largest portion, yes. PISers accounts for approximately 14% of the total budget. And then medical benefits, I believe, is about 3% maybe? So less than 20% of the budget are those two pieces, correct?
Okay, excellent. Yeah, so I'm just, I guess I'm just trying to like lay a little bit of the groundwork insofar as how we get here, because I think there's a great deal of misunderstanding about how we get here. You know, particularly looking at a budget where we know our revenue is going to be decreased. I don't believe that this board has been presented with any hard decisions to make, right? We've never been said, nobody, I haven't, I haven't been told, and maybe I haven't been listening in the right way, but like, no one said, "If you do want to balance this without a tax increase, these are the sacrifices that would need to be made." Or if we wanted to avoid a fund balance drawdown, or if we wanted to try to level out that. Or if we wanted to avoid a fund balance drawdown, or if we wanted to try to level out that increase, these would be the sacrifices that we would have to choose, right? Some of those things have come into my committee or in our committee in projects and planning of saying, "Well, that tennis court will stay fractured for another year," right? Or our, our fields will be unplayable if we don't fix our stadium lights, right? Which, those sound kind of un, also unmovable. Do, is the board, and maybe this is rhetorical, but is the board satisfied that we've been given hard choices? So have we been given those trade-offs before we agreed to the 2.3%? Is that, has that come up in the Resource Planning Advisory or inside conversations? Do you understand the question I'm asking?
Yeah, I absolutely understand it. From my perspective, the answer is absolutely yes, certainly in the resource planning and in the other conversations we've had. I think we've made careful decisions about how much we want to put into capital, for example, each year. Careful decisions about how to finance or refinance our bond issues. There are a lot of options other than program cuts to, to get closer to balanced budget and to close that gap, and all of them are looked at every year. We do talk about lots of, and have talked with the superintendent, about lots of efficiency opportunities, how we're planning and replacing staff and faculty as they come due for, either through the early retirement system or other attrition, how we staff other positions. So we, we definitely go through that conversation every year. It's a zero-based budgeting process, so everything gets reviewed, and we get an early read on the budget as early as January and where we stand. So I, you know, have we been presented with hard choices? There's a lot of them, yes, I would say. Have we actually come to the point where saying we would consider cuts to balance a budget when we're increasing that budget at less than the rate of inflation consistently over the last five years? I would say there hasn't been a push to, to push to that level, because we're very proud of the programs we have. And I, I don't feel like asking for zero increase is actually practical or necessary when we are managing. That's why I asked the question about what is our rate of growth in expenditures? Are we managing it at a responsible level that is under the rate of the Act One Index? Or, and at the rate, under the rate of inflation generally? And the answer is yes. And actually, I took the time to look back at since I joined the board. This is our, my sixth budget, and the rate of inflation's running at 3.9%. The rate of Act One Index is 3.7%. Our growth in expenditures is 3.3% over that time. So over the long term, we're beating inflation by 20%. If you want to make that zero, just because you feel like that's what it should be, you would have to have substantial program cuts. You'd have to have cut, cut programs that are spending by 20% roughly over six years, five, six years, to not raise those taxes at all and keep, and that would mean obviously substantial program cuts.
I don't think she's suggesting that.
No, I'm just getting a reference for, because every year comes up. It's like, why are you raising taxes? So if you don't do it, every year, you would eventually accumulate those deficits relative to what it costs to operate the district. And you would be running, you know, by now, by now, from the time I joined the board, you'd be looking at 19.8% would be your, if you did, if you'd never raised taxes.
Yes, yes.
I, I think it's important to note that over the last four or five years, when we did contracts, we made sure we slowed the growth of compensation for, for administrators especially, excuse me. And that's also the purpose of the teacher retirement, early retirement plan. And so that has helped control those costs over time.
Yeah, we've slowed the growth of every single one of our personnel contracts. I mean, let's be clear. Over the last six years, we have slowed the growth of every single one of our personnel contracts. So I just want to say that really clearly. I am usually the person that is saying like, no, this is, we shouldn't be looking at tax increases. No, this isn't the year for that. But I can say with confidence that we have restructured every single one of our contracts. We have looked to slow the growth in every one of those. The majority of this year's difficulties really are in decreases in the property assessed values and income, and that is outside of our control. And so for me this year, I will vote yes for a tax increase, because I understand that this year, there's a different conversation being had. But I don't think that Ms. Zitch's point should get lost. I still believe that we shouldn't raise taxes every single year. And I still believe that we should be able to have a balanced budget that is not continuously borrowing from our funds and our fund balances. And I think that point should not get lost in the fact that this year happens to be a particularly unfortunate year when it comes to property tax revenue and the Fox Chapel area school district.
I wanted to mention a couple of other things. For example, the fact that we actually are growing enrollment in the past six years. So we're up 5% from when I joined the board, so you would expect that we would have some costs associated with that, which we certainly have. We had, we've refinanced our bonds, as I mentioned earlier, to try to, you know, find additional savings. And we actually happened to do that, not happened, with very careful planning, did that at almost the perfect timing, thanks to the administration and our Resource Planning Advisory Group. And we've also had to do something called COVID, and that created a huge amount of uncertainty, as well as some revenue, but also a lot of adjustments and, and challenges to planning for sure. And, and we've increased, this board over the last few years has increased the spending on capital projects, which we know we desperately need to keep up with. That is probably the easiest thing to underfond for a long time, and then you realize your buildings are crumbling. And we have been very diligent, because you can trim that in one year, but you're going, going to eventually pay for that. And we've kept our debt, our debt ratio is extremely low, and we had that confirmed by an outside source just recently. We knew it from the numbers, but we, the resource planning had some conversations about, about our bond financing. And we had it confirmed that we have an extremely low debt load, and that is because we are partially funding and trying to keep up with those capital needs. And that's a few million a year that we weren't spending in 2019, 2020.
Thank you for all these good points. Any other questions or comments from Ms. Pauluscheck?
I thought the last presentation was really detailed and thorough, and I have pointed several people to that, to really listen to the, to the full conversation and picture, and not just blurbs that one may see places. But I think we have asked each year to, for the district, for the administration, to kind of look closely at the budget, sees those, see those opportunities that would save money but also benefit our students. And I think they've really done a, a great job of doing that, why costs have remained almost consistent. I think there was some that was so little change. So of course, we never could have seen the economic world that we would live in, but because of that diligence and work, we're, we're certainly not in the worst-case scenarios. Space high fire, we're in a really good place, I think. So thank you for all the work that you've put into that. And stayed so late telling us about it.
Many revisions, I know.
It was a very late night.
Any other comments, questions?
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pauluscheck. Okay, is that the end of our superintendent report?
That is the end of the superintendent's report, Ms. Dadd, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Jafre, is there a solicitor's report?
No report.
Thank you. I would like to ask for a motion. I need to read the motion. A motion to approve the combined agenda study session for regular business meeting dated April 14, 2025.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on the minutes? Okay, Mrs. Anuzik, could you please call the roll? Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Dadd?
Yes.
Ms. Finley?
Yes.
Mr. Frank?
Yes.
Mr. Good?
Yes.
Mr. Hamilton?
Yes.
Dr. Hasselcorn?
Yes.
Mrs. Lynch?
Yes.
Ms. Zitch?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. It's time for our first public comment period, and we do not have anyone signed up. We will move on to new business. Mrs. Lynch, could you please read the facilities and transportation report?
I'm moving on to items tonight. Number one is acceptance of bid and award of plumbing construction contract, high school domestic water line and service replacement project. Accept the bid and approve to award a contract as attached to the bidder listed below on high school domestic water line and service replacement project, conditioned upon the contractor completing their post-bid award documents to rabel plumbing company for the plumbing construction contract with a base bid amount of 258,200, and accepting the alternate bid in the amount of 800 for a total contract award of 259,000. And number two, McKinley Architecture and Engineering Incorporated Agreement, high school tennis court renovations and athletic field sports lighting replacement projects. Approve the agreement as attached between the Fox Chapel area school district and McKinley Architecture and Engineering Incorporated for architectural and engineering services related to the high school tennis court renovations and athletic field sports lighting replacement projects at a cost of 73,300. This is a new agreement. I move on those two items.
Second. Oh, second. I'm having microphone problems too. Do we have any questions or comments on these two items? No? Okay. Mrs. Anuzik, could you please call the roll? Ms. Dadd?
Yes.
Ms. Finley?
Yes.
Mr. Frank?
Yes.
Mr. Good?
Yes.
Mr. Hamilton?
Yes.
Dr. Hasselcorn?
Yes.
Mrs. Lynch?
Yes.
Ms. Zitch?
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Mr. Hamilton, could you please read the finance report?
Yes, I'll be moving on five items before proposing this sixth item, which is the proposed final general fund operating budget separately. So item one is disbursements from general fund 10 in the amount of $7,464,244.87. Item two is capital reserve fund disbursements from Fund 31 in the amount of $524,159.45. Item three is the finance report for March 2025, as acknowledged and filed for audit as attached. Item four is the budget transfers for 2024, 2025 are approved as attached. And item five is the student activities finance report for 2024, 2025. Middle school and high school student activity financial reports are acknowledged and filed for audit as attached. I move on all five items.
Second. Thank you. Any questions or comments on these items? Mrs. Anuzik, will you please call the roll? Ms. Finley?
Yes.
Mr. Frank?
Yes.
Mr. Good?
Yes.
Mr. Hamilton?
Yes.
Dr. Hasselcorn?
Yes.
Mrs. Lynch?
Yes.
Ms. Zitch?
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Dadd?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Item six, I move to approve the 2025, 2026 proposed final general fund operating budget. The superintendent, with the advice of, of and upon the recommendation of the administration and with the advisement from the Resource Planning Advisory, has prepared present, for presentation, the school board, to the school board, the proposed final general operating fund budget for 2025, 2026 as attached. Therefore, be it resolved to adopt the 2025, 2026 proposed final general fund operating budget in the amount of 1,023,187,421 dollars as attached, with a real estate tax increase of 2.3%, 0.4948 mils, and a continuation of all other taxes without change. I move on this operating budget.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on the proposed final budget? Mrs. Anuzik, will you please call the roll? Mr. Frank?
Yes.
Mr. Good?
Yes.
Mr. Hamilton?
Yes.
Dr. Hasselcorn?
Yes.
Mrs. Lynch?
Yes.
Ms. Zitch?
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Dadd?
Yes.
Ms. Finley?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Mr. Hamilton, we have an information item.
Information item, there we go. Still on, huh? We have a 2025, 2026 Allegheny County Schools Health Insurance Consortium rates information. Allegheny County Schools, you should just hear this as an acronym, Health Insurance Consortium. It's like ASIC or something. Approved rates below or effective July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2026. Performance, the performance blue PPO and EPO rate increase is 5.7%. The Concordia Elite Prime increase is 3%, and the Davis Vision rate increase is 3%. You can read the other rates, the actual rates in the agenda. I move, well, actually, this is just an information item. I would just comment that one of the items that we talked about, it's not a huge part of our budget, but it is significant. This has, in my time, I think has always been between 5% and 9% increase. And so it is a significant expense for the district, is going high every year.
Yes, thank you. Any comments on the finance info item? Okay. Mrs. Cooper, could you please read the instruction report?
Yes, I'll be moving on four items. The first one is to approve the list of candidates as attached for June 8, 2025. Graduations submitted by the Fox Chapel area high school administration. Candidates must eat, meet all graduation requirements by June 7 in order to graduate and receive their diplomas. The second is to approve the services agreement as attached between the school district and the day school for educational and related alternative education placement services for the period of July 1, 25 through June 30, 26. This is a renewal of services. Number three is to approve the comprehensive services agreement and special education services addendum A as attached between the Fox Chapel area school district and the Allegheny Intermediate Unit for specialized educational services for the period of July 1, 25 through June 30, 26. This is a renewal of services. Number four is to approve the stipulated adjudication as presented. Move on those four items.
Second. Give it to Ariel. Do we have any questions or comments on these four items?
Dr. Eljek, can you just speak a little bit to what's in the comprehensive services agreement for special education, the addendum that's noted here?
Sure. The comprehensive services agreement is through the Allegheny Intermediate for services that we may contract with the Allegheny Intermediate for. And there's also a special education services addendum for those same services. It's procedural and required in, for, from the Pennsylvania Department of Education for us to have approved it. But the comprehensive services, we access in our district things like our English as a second language. We access sometimes some professional learning. We access some support services in special education for hearing support or for sometimes vision support. It just depends. That can change throughout the year as well. But this essentially outlines that we will adhere to their cost analysis and work collaboratively with them.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? Mrs. Anuzik, will you please call the roll? Mr. Good?
Yes.
Mr. Hamilton?
Yes.
Dr. Hasselcorn?
Yes.
Mrs. Lynch?
Yes.
Ms. Zitch?
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Dadd?
Yes.
Ms. Finley?
Yes.
Mr. Frank?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Mr. Frank, could you please read the legislation and policy report?
Should I separate these three motions?
Not today, sir.
Well, there's one separate already.
The first one is on its own, and then the next two are together.
Okay, that was, okay. All right, I will move that we approve for the second reading and adoption of the following revised policies as attached. Number 222 Tobacco and Vaping Products.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on this policy? We did discuss this last month, and it's been discussed several times in the the governance committee as well. Any additional comments today? Okay. Mrs. Anuzik, could you please call the roll? Mr. Hamilton?
Yes.
Dr. Hasselcorn?
Yes.
Mrs. Lynch?
Yes.
Ms. Zitch?
No.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Dadd?
Yes.
Ms. Finley?
Yes.
Mr. Frank?
Yes.
Mr. Good?
Yes.
Motion carries with eight in favor and one voting no, Ms. Zitch.
Motion carries with eight in favor and one voting no, Ms. Zich.
Thank you. Mr. Frank?
Yes. Number two, I will move the revised second reading and adoption of the following policies. Number 709 Building Security Surveillance. 808 Food Services. 808.1 Free Reduced Price Meals and Free Milk. 810 Number Two Transportation Video-Audio Recording. Number 827 Conflict of Interest. Number 828 Fraud. Number 901 Public Relations Objectives. Number 902 Publications Program. Number 906 Public Complaint Procedures. Number 908 Relations with Parents/Guardians. Number 909 Municipal Government Relations. Number 910 Community Engagement. Number 912 Relations with Educational Institutions. And I would also move for a new policy, second reading and adoption. Number 815.2 Use of Generative Artificial Intelligence in Education.
Second. Thank you. Any questions or comments about these policies? That was Vanessa, yes. Mrs. Anusik, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Hasselcorn?
Yes.
Mrs. Lynch?
Yes.
Ms. Zich?
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Dadd?
Yes.
Ms. Finley?
Yes.
Mr. Frank?
Yes.
Mr. Good?
Yes.
Mr. Hamilton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Ms. Zich, could you please read the personnel report?
All right. Personnel, item E1, Resignations, Education Support. Resignation of Kimberly A. Panza, Instructional Assistant at O'Hara Elementary School due to retirement. For STEAM Camp, the resignation of Michelle Beck, Instructor for the STEAM Camp at Fairview Elementary School due to personal reasons. The resignation of Kara Finkel, Instructor for the STEAM Camp at Fairview Elementary School due to personal reasons. Supplemental Contract Athletic. The following athletic supplemental contract is approved effective May 6th for Joshua Randall, Basketball Boys High School First Assistant. Weave Revision Professional. Elizabeth J. Dames, Elementary Teacher at O'Hara Elementary School, previously approved for child rearing under this article, with return scheduled now for August 13th. Is revised to return May 19th. Employment Agreement. The following employment agreement is approved as presented. Behavioral Specialist Stacy C. Trippchick. School Police Officer Summer Hours. The following school police officers are approved for additional summer hours as needed at the officer's hourly rate for Scott E. Bailey, Stanley M. Brattis, Joshua A. Dietz, Dennis J. Lynch, Timothy G. Rush, Shannon Sentucci, and Eric R. Valentine. For Summer Programs 2025 STEAM Camp, the individuals listed below are approved for, as instructors for the STEAM Camp at Fairview. Carrie L. Harris, Kylie S. Miller. For High School, the individuals listed below are approved as Western PA Learning Academy Specialty Workshop Facilitators, sign and host. Penny M. Kepke, Leslie A. Cowles, EDD, Lisa R. Gibson, Chad S. Morley. The following individuals approved as the Transition Program Coordinator, Leslie A. Cowles, EDD. The following individuals are approved as summer high school faculty. Leslie A. Cowles, EDD, Jennifer L. Klein, Mark J. Matuzziak, Megan A. Meburn, Excuse me, Stephanie S. Riley, Deborah A. Welty. The following individuals are approved as summer high school FCAO Credit Recovery Faculty. Mary E. Dixon, Lisa R. Gibson, Jennifer L. Klein, Stephanie S. Riley, and Heather M. Skilin. I move on these six items. All rates and effective dates and relevant agreements as indicated in the agenda.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on the personnel report? Mrs. Anusik, could you please call the roll?
Mrs. Lynch?
Yes.
Ms. Zich?
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Dadd?
Yes.
Ms. Finley?
Yes.
Mr. Frank?
Yes.
Mr. Good?
Yes.
Mr. Hamilton?
Yes.
Dr. Hasselcorn?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Mr. Good, could you please read the Operations and Cooperative Services Report?
Yes, I have five items. The first is to approve the appointment of Eric G. Hamilton as the school board treasurer, approved effective July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026. Number two, the following teams are approved to hold summer camps activities in 2025 for athletes in the Fox Chapel area school district, Fox Chapel area baseball, boys and girls basketball, cheerleading, boys and girls cross-country, field hockey, football, boys and girls golf, boys and girls lacrosse, boys and girls soccer, softball, strength and conditioning, boys and girls swimming and diving, boys and girls volleyball, boys and girls wrestling. Number three, the appointment of Adam Good and Meredith, Mary Beth Dadd as voting delegates to the PSBA 2025 Delegate Assembly to be held October 21st, 2025 is approved. Number four, approve the addendum as attached between the Fox Chapel area school district and the United States Golf Association for additional parking at O'Hara Elementary School at a fee of $4,000, effective June 9th, 2025 through July 15th, 2025. This addendum is pursuant to the agreement that was approved on June 10th. Number five, approve the agreement and lease as attached between the Fox Chapel area school district and the Jewish Community Center of Greater Pittsburgh for operation of its Maquisia Games, effective August 4th, 2025 through August 6th, 2025. This is a new agreement. I move on these five items.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on these items?
Dr. Eljack, can you tell us a little bit about what the United States Golf Association Parking Lot Agreement is and what they'll be using that for?
Sure. The USGA, or the United States Golf Association, has requested and the board approved permitting parking at Fox Chapel area high school and at O'Hara Elementary during the upcoming US Open, the first week of June. And when that happens, this district has been used as a parking site before. The USGA brings all of their staff, and they really do take care of it and staff the whole thing. So, it really is just allowing parking on our lots. There was a request to add some additional parking in some of the grassy areas at O'Hara Elementary, and that's what this addendum would be for.
Do they assume all liability for any damages done during that time?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear your.
Does, does the Golf Association assume all liability for any damages?
Yes, yes, they do. The question, if you didn't hear it over here, it's hard to hear in this room, is does the Golf Association assume a liability? And yes, they do. It's one of the reasons we make sure that you approve that agreement. But they honestly have been a great partner, and we've never had problems in the past, so we don't anticipate any this time either.
Sure. Just want to make sure the community sees it.
Absolutely.
Because it will have an impact on the people who live near it.
Absolutely, it will. That's the same reason we're bringing it forward to you, so that everyone is aware. And that's only if they need it. There's an indication that they may need it. That will be the last part of all of the parking that is used, so.
And number five is an organization using our space?
It is. It's an organization that requested to use, I believe it's the baseball and softball fields on our campus, and we were able to accommodate that.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mrs. Anusik, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Zich?
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Dadd?
Yes.
Ms. Finley?
Yes.
Mr. Frank?
Yes.
Mr. Good?
Yes.
Mr. Hamilton?
Yes.
Dr. Hasselcorn?
Yes.
Mrs. Lynch?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Time for our second public comment period. We do not have anyone signed up. After that, we have the Fox Chapel Educators Association. No comment tonight? Okay. Board comments. Mr. Frank?
What a great evening. A long evening, but a great evening. Explaining the accomplishments of our students, our staff, and our parents. The accomplishments, but also the potential for what their future holds. And also, kind of a heartwarming presentation about the library. I expected one about books, but not about some of the other aspects. So, that was, that was very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Finley?
Congratulations to everyone who made their accomplishments, be it teachers, students, athletes, all of you. Thank you so much for all you have put forth. And to the community, I know this week has been trying, and tomorrow, we will have the students get back, and I'm sure everyone is looking forward to a little normalcy.
Thank you. Mrs. Lynch?
Yeah. I wanted to say, especially to Dr. Ward, you know, schools have a lot of spaces that kids can participate in. You know, we can be athletes, we can be in band. But for kids who don't mind those spaces to be the ones they fit in, having these extra spaces where our students can feel accepted and they can feel as though they have a home and they can feel welcome is vital. And so, I just want to put a special shout-out to Dr. Ward and our high school library. The creation of that kind of space takes a very particular person and a very particular talent. And that's very impressive that she has been able to create that there, and very, very cool. So, thank you for that.
If I could add something. Mrs. Welty, who was, who was on earlier, and Laura Ward are two of the girls wrestling coaches. So, once the library closes for the afternoon, they come down to practice. So, it's, it's good that they're involved in a multiple, multiple areas.
Good to know, thank you.
FYI, these mics are not this hard. Just put your mouth very close to it in the front. I, really, guys, it's not this deep. Lean in.
I'm leaning in.
Okay, Dr. Hasselcorn?
Congratulations to all of the teachers who celebrated 25 years. It just seems like such an understatement to say thank you. And even as I think about all the teachers welcoming our kids back tomorrow after a really crazy week, and I know they will do so with open arms and provide all the support that's needed. Thank you. You're a gift to our community, truly.
Thank you. Mr. Hamilton?
I thank you to the board for continuing to support me and being your treasurer for another year. I just, like I say, you know, over the last few years, I have worked with a great team here on the board and with the administration. I feel very fortunate to have been gone through these budget processes. As stressful as they are, it has always worked out. It always does. You have to remember that when you go into it, because sometimes the numbers do look daunting to begin with. I also, outside the board, spend a lot of time, a fair amount of time, looking at financials for private sector companies, you know, as part of my investment hobby. And one of the things that I was reflecting on is that if you came to me and said, "I've got a company that has, is growing its customer base by 5%. It's number one in its industry. It is, its expenses are growing at 20% less, 15% to 20% less than the rate of inflation. It has healthy reserves, super low debt." I would say you've got a really good company there. And all of those characteristics fit this district currently. So, I think we're in a good place. Doesn't mean don't keep scrutinizing the budget every year. Keep asking the hard questions. Keep looking for places where we can be more efficient. We owe that to the taxpayers, but we are delivering an extremely high-quality product to our taxpayers. It is keeping our property values high. It is investing in our children and the next generation of property owners, hopefully, in this community. And I think the, I was really impressed as well this today about one aspect of the presentations that just reminded me what a great job our district does with the resources we invest in this district. And that was just the way in which, in so many different ways, we saw how this district finds a place for all kinds of kids and to do all kinds of things. I don't think the library was a big thing at my high school, but it certainly is for some kids here, and it's really important to find those niches and places where people, kids can find support. And that's a testament to, from the top to the bottom, the investment that people make, both financially and in their personal time and effort of the professional educators and administrators of this district. So, thank you all, and looking forward to another great year next year.
Thank you. Mrs. Cooper?
I'm going to go back to some of the academic committee things. I know the board was sent some materials to you, and I really hope that you look at it and click the links. The new science initiative is just something really special and unique. I think between that and the new social studies at the elementary level that we've seen, the district is really kind of rethinking the whole learning model in a really exciting way. I'm thankful for the district, for a district that has the capacity to kind of, well, to be leaders in those areas. There's a great video link there about the work that we've done with other educators in the area, and it's just, I think it's a really exciting shift on how we teach students. So, I'd encourage the board to look in that material a bit more. And of course, congratulations to the teachers for the 25 years. I know there is at least three teachers here that impacted both my kids in major ways. So, I can't imagine that impact over 25 years. They have a lot to be proud of.
Thank you. Ms. Zich?
I'll just echo the words of gratitude. I know that one of the first things I speak to when I speak with pride about our district is our retention. The extraordinary tenure and experience of faculty in our district is a mark of excellence, and it's something that, that I know that we lose with these retirements, and it's hard and important that we recognize their achievements. So, thank you for all of their use of service. And then I'll also say, when I heard that we were adopting OpenSaiet, I got so pumped. Because I, you know, this was, sort of has been in development, and it's this true community of excellent teachers from all around the country who are developing this work. It's an awesome product. It's in, it's like, like you said, a total shift, and it really reflects best practices in the field. And so, that's, it is an exciting thing to see. And then lastly, I'll just say to all of the students, congratulations on all these fine achievements. And seniors, be safe and have a great, great rest of your year. This is an exciting time.
Mr. Good?
It's great to see all of the students and all the presentations today.